Good evening and welcome to Helena City Commission Meeting, December 20th, December 21st, 2020, 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in this unprecedented time. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. In order to maintain decorum, I will ask you to abide by a few meeting guidelines. We understand this topic, some topics may be emotional for many. However, I ask you to be respectful of the commission, the panelists, and all participants. Any use of profanity or hostile language is unacceptable. You will be asked to refrain from using any such language or you will be removed from the webinar. Further, I ask you to be respectful of the many who wish to speak on this topic. Please be aware of the previous comments and avoid redundant commentary. If you would like to provide public commentary, you may do so either by typing in a question and answer feature or by raising your hand. If you are participating by telephone, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine and mute or unmute yourself using star six. You will be called upon to speak by myself or the clerk of the commission. Please keep your comments brief. As you may be given two minutes, prior to offering your comments, please provide your first and last name. And if you are a city resident. You are not a resident of the city, we ask you to clearly state so for the record. The City of Helena is committed to accepting all public commentary and questions posed during the discussion. However, addressing every statement during this meeting may not occur. Please note all public comments and question polls during the meeting will go on the permanent record. We thank you for your participation in this forum and appreciate your comments and patience as we navigate this change in platform. If you would like to submit a formal statement, you may email it to mayorandcommission@helena mt.gov. Mayor and Commission@helena mt.gov. Any comments submitted to this page and its list of fans are public records, subject to pursuant to MCA 2-6-1003. For a questionable or anonymous screen name, please remember you will be required to provide a first and last name as your screen name. If you intend to provide audio public commentary, you will not be called upon unless you are willing to provide your full name for the record. If you are unable to change your screen name, you may provide public commentary through the question and answer feature in written form, where you can type your full name for the record. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you put the pledge, the flag on, please? Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Board Appointments. Helena Public Arts Committee. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Helena Public Arts Committee. Appointment of Leo, Leah Capino to a first term on the H-PAC term will begin 1/1/21 and expires 12/31/24. Any comments or discussion?
Mayor, I'd move appointment of Leah Capino to a first term on the H-PAC term will begin upon 1/1/21 and expire on 12/31/24.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Holliday.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, for the record, I believe.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Here, and I want to let you all know that Commissioner Loughlin is unavailable today. She has a death in the family and she's attending to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Consent Agenda Claims. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Mayor, I recommend you entertain a motion to approve the claims for December 3rd, 7, and 11, in a total of $715,106.49.
Discussion Commission. I entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
I entertain a motion to accept consent agenda, item A, claims.
Do we have any public comments? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Holliday. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Communications Proposals from Commissioners. The floor is yours, Commissioners. Okay, we'll move along. Report from the City Attorney.
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Mayor. I'd like to turn over my presentation and report to Director Ryan Leland, who's going to give an update on changes in the transfer station hours within the city. Director Leland.
You have the floor, Mrs. Leland, Director Leland.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Just want to bring this forward is we want to update the hours of the transfer station is we have reached capacity because we have been seeing a 20% to 30% increase throughout the season of trips to the transfer station. And we have gotten to a point that we no longer can just operate at six days a week. We've gotten a lot of complaints and there's lines that will be alleviated a little bit with having it open on Sunday. But we're updating that on February 1st or January 31st, we are going to go to seven day operations again. It's how it was before the March closing for COVID. We are going to work on operational, working on operational COVID rules to be able to operate through the COVID as we have been doing. We have been seeing COVID come through the transfer station here and there. It has not devastated our crew, which is lucky. But we are going to be able to operate the system, work with COVID, and then be able to provide the better customer service going to seven days a week. And those hours will be from 8:30 in the morning to seven, or eight o'clock in the morning to 7:15 to let people into the transfer station but close it at 4:30. We need that delay between when we let someone in to give them time to be able to unload the loads and then get out of the transfer station because there's a lot of conflicts that we are seeing. And cops are being called down there because of the conflicts. They're trying to get people out of the transfer station. If we let them in at 4:30 and say you have five minutes to get it done. So this is a safety matter, this is a customer service matter, and we are at capacity until we are able to change the transfer station with either more scales, removing the recycle area. But that will take a master plan and a lot more work going forward. But just wanted to give an update that we are going to make those changes at the end of January and we'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director Leland. Questions or comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Please go ahead.
I first really appreciate you all bringing this forward and being responsive. One thing I was wondering about in the memo, it talked about a little bit more communication and education for the community about what times are you not going to find the lines and being more strategic about, you know, how we approach communicating that to the public? Have you all had a discussion about what that communication looks like or will that come later on?
It'll come a little bit later on. We will work with the PIO, Amanda, or if we hire a new PIO in the timeframe. But we will be looking at the best way we can try and reach all the customers. A lot of them are scratch gravel landfill permit holders and not just city residents. But we are going to look at putting signs at the entrance of the transfer station, being able to put it out on our website, possibly providing a newsletter to our permit holders, just giving graphs to say these are the hours that we're seeing extremely high use and you may want to avoid it going to other hours. So those are the type of educational type informational packets that we are going to provide.
I appreciate it.
Also, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you, I just wanted to underscore one point. That was around the reason that we had cut off the date and it had a lot more to do with the need to limit contact with the public and reduce the opportunity for spread. As we learned, the CDC has revised their cumulative contact and we could have actually had worse conditions that we had created because that cumulative time period was 15 minutes in a 24-hour duration. We increased the amount of time that the staff were actually in contact. So by returning to the seven day, we actually reduced the opportunity and increased the amount of time away from participants and at the facility as well, return to a system that the community is used to. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a thanks for staff for making this happen. I know it is a fairly significant adjustment for them and but I think there's going to be a lot of happy customers out there, so I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Madam Manager, are you done?
I am, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Director Leland. Communications from Helena Citizens Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Dylan Clapmire, HCC Chairman, just want to start off by thanking Sheila, or congratulating Sheila Danielson and Ryan Leland on being appointed to their new positions and directorships. The finance positions and public works positions are really important to the HCC's city charter mission, which is to provide recommendations on the budget and the future development of the city. So we'll look forward to working with Ryan and Sheila in 2021. Normally, the HCC wouldn't have a meeting in December, but we did have an informal meeting last week just to begin planning for 2021 with things being so different this year and most likely being different for the first part of next year, we felt it was important to get together. So during that meeting, we discussed the recommendations process for going forward into 2021. Appreciate the City Manager Rachel. She and Danae are going to work with Peggy, our coordinator, to make sure that those recommendations from the HCC get on the administrative meeting agendas. And then whichever HCC rep sponsors the particular recommendation, we'll make sure that they're in attendance to answer any questions that the Commission or city staff might have. Just wrapping up the year 2020, I want to thank the Mayor and Commissioners. All of you attended at least one HCC meeting in 2020 and presented and took our questions. So we appreciate that, as well as Rachel and Danae attending some meetings this fall. At our, coming up in our January 2021 meeting, we will be doing officer elections. And so we will be sure and introduce you to the 2021 officers for the HCC. And we look forward to jumping right into the budget process once that begins. So I think that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Any other questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do just have one. Thank you, Dylan, I'm curious, are you all going to be reaching out to each of the Commissioners to, you know, pick a certain date that you'd like us to attend? Or would you like us to connect with you individually?
I think that we will try and do that again. Yeah, I'll reach out after the January meeting when we have things a little bit more solidified for 2021. But we certainly would welcome all the Commissioners and the Mayor to at least one of our 2021 meetings.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, just for Mr. Clapmire, thanks. I also, you know, would appreciate the head up for the invitation to that. It's, you know, it's sometimes difficult to keep track of all the meetings that are going on. And so any reminder that I can get, I really appreciate and will try my best to attend, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Dean and Logan. Yes, of course, we'll be sure to reach out in January and make sure that it works with your schedule and give you plenty of advance notice.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clapmire. Regular items. Consider a resolution of intention to reduce the monthly wastewater service line replacement loan program and to eliminate the monthly water and water waste service line program charges on June 30th, 2030, to amend resolution number 20488 to set a public hearing date for January 11, 2021. Madam Director Danielson or Director Leland, who's coming on first?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
Sheila Danielson, I worked with Director Leland on this particular proposal and we brought it forth before that administrative meeting earlier this month. And after some analysis of the program and current usage of the program, we did some calculations based on some assumptions of usage and determined that the fund balances of the program are rapidly increasing much more than the usage of the program and believe that future usage, even though we're hoping that based on more communication and popularity the program grows, that the current rate of the fund balance growth will support the program and to the point where we believe that we can reduce the wastewater service fee for the loan program from $647 a month per account to $2.50 a month per account, primarily based on the fact that the wastewater service line loan program currently has a fund balance of more than $1.2 million and the water fund has a fund balance of about $450,000, $455,000. And the programs are growing exponentially more than what the current usage of the programs are. So we are bringing this forth to the Commission, excuse me, to consider the resolution.
Thank you, Director Danielson, Director Leland.
I don't have much to add. We work together and I want to thank Sheila and Thomas for all the work that they did on this and that in agreement that we can reduce the wastewater amount and then come and take a look at it again to see if we can get a better analysis of how many service lines we are going to replace and what the usage is going to be. So it's just going to be to reduce it from $647 to $250 and put a sunset, tentative sunset date of 2030.
Thank you, Director. Any comments or questions from the Commission? Any public comments? Oh, sorry, Commissioner.
It doesn't really matter who's it's for, I guess I'll go to Ms. Danielson. So we're proposing a tentative sunset date in 2030. But just for pure clarification for anyone out there, because we've had a lot of people reach out about future sunset dates and rate setting. If a new commission came in in one year and decided it wanted to up these rates back to where they were, is there anything about our current action tonight that actually stops that future commission from changing the rates?
I think that should go to, was the attorney?
Yes, Commissioner, I'm going to have to defer to the City Attorney on that.
Is he on? Mr. Jordan? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Holliday and the rest of the Commission. I've been notified by City Attorney Jordan that he's having some internet usage issues. So he's popping in and out of the meeting. I'll defer to you as the Chair, Mr. Mayor, as to how you might want to handle that question.
Commissioner Holliday, would you stall that, the answer to that question until he can come back on and then?
Yeah, I mean, I'll answer my own question, I guess. We can, we can, the future commission could change them at its, by fiat at any moment. We could change them tomorrow if we wanted to. So I think this is a good thing for us to do since it's what we said we would do after analyzing these funds two years ago. I just want to remind us, since when we said we were going to analyze them two years ago, then we changed the discussion to a potential insurance program along the way as well. And I've let people who've reached out to me and said, well, you guys said you were going to sunset. And I said, well, commission is a commission, it's a point in time creature. And so one year from now, five years from now, it would shock me if these rates are not discussed again, either within the next year, but certainly will be discussed again within the next decade. So this is our statement and our recommendation to future commissions. But we can't bind them on this. And so I think we all just want to be clear on that and make sure that we understand that nobody can wave this in our face and say, or future commissions face and say, hey, those four dudes back on December 21st, 2020, bound the commission to this, especially because we have discussed the idea of a future insurance program, which would certainly require a rate increase based on all the numbers we've been given. And so this is solely based on, again, a point in time today with the funds that exist today, $5. Every other discussion we've had has been $8 to $9 into perpetuity. So I just wanted us to all acknowledge that, be aware of it. Sorry, Mr. Jordan wasn't on, but I guess next time I'll just answer my own question.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks for answering your question.
Mr. Mayor, just to comment if I may, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, you know, I'm supportive of this move. I do still have some of the original concern that I expressed way back in a budget work session, you know, as, and I guess it even goes further back than that, when the program was originally visioned, there were some questions that were put forward by the City Attorney's Office as to the legality of it. So I think, you know, while I'm supportive of reducing the rates, I still think we have that issue that might expose us to a liability, but generally supportive of this, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission?
Yeah, I have a question for Commissioner Logan. What liability are you referring to? Because you mentioned it a couple of times, I'm just curious.
I, let's say somebody took up the question as to the legality of it.
Right, but somebody could do that with regard to any rate or any action by the city. I guess I'm speaking specifically as to this one.
Well, it just, it just seems like, you know, there's some clarity on whether originally expressed by the City Attorney's Office as to the legality, whether it's a fear or a doubt. So it seemed like he made some pretty clear, he gave a pretty clear analysis that, you know, it's, it's kind of questionable. That's my concern.
Yeah, I guess my recollection is the City Attorney addressed this and found it to be completely fine. That's why I'm curious where that's coming from, because I've never seen any communication from him expressing those concerns.
So I think, I don't know how many meetings ago, but it hasn't been that long ago when in the packet, that original, the minutes from that original meeting from, I think it was May of 2018, were presented before us the information therein. And so, you know, I just seemed like we were getting that reminder at that time.
Yeah, I mean, I remember us having that discussion and I remember the City Attorney was asked specifically about it because the discussion that came up, and he's back, so maybe he can help us out. But my clear recollection of those meetings was that the City Attorney felt that these were perfectly fine and defensible. And so I guess that's my curiosity on sort of your repeated statements about liability when, you know, we haven't gotten that direction from our City Attorney. They've been in place, we've reset them numerous times, you've been involved in the discussions. You know, I'm just curious about the sort of loose terminology throwing around of liability, that's all. But you've explained your position.
Well, I see Attorney Jordan is back online. Commissioner, would you refer your question to the City Attorney, please? Commissioner Logan, that is, I'm sorry.
Thank you, mine was not so much a question as it was just a concern that I had. Generally supportive of the resolution lowering the rates and establishing a sunset date, but still concerned with some of the original concerns that were brought up by the City Attorney as to the legality of these charges. And I am still not convinced, but I just wanted to say that for the record.
Mr. Jordan, do you have a response?
Sorry, Mayor, I apologize, having significant internet difficulties. I don't have any comment if I'm not being asked for an opinion, I'll just, I won't say anything further.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I guess I do, I mean, we've got a, there's a sort of a confusion. There's a representation on the record, Mr. Jordan, that your position is there are liability and legality issues with regard to this wastewater water rate that's been in place for two years that this commission has approved of and discussed on numerous occasions. And my recollection and my understanding from you when we discussed these was that this rate was permissible and was defensible and was legal. And the questions that were being asked when you were off, I was just confused by Commissioner Logan's repeated references to the liability the city faces and it's been expressed to me that that's all based on your delivery of legal concerns to us and nothing else.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Holliday, yeah, I apologize, I wasn't tracking, I had to log out and find another computer. I stand by my opinion from about two years ago. I don't think the current structure of the water and wastewater service line program is a tax, although I don't think it is certainly black and white. I think there are arguments to make that it benefits a specific class of property, not everybody generally, and we would certainly defend the program and the imposition of the water and wastewater service line charges if somebody did challenge that.
Thank you for the clarification.
No, that's good enough for me, Mr. Mayor, I mean, that's how every assessment works, thanks.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just going to say I'm happy to make a motion if you're ready.
Well, I'll entertain some public comments and then we'll do the motion, is that okay?
Absolutely.
You bet. Do we have any comments from the public on this topic? Madam Clerk, do you have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands and no one has entered any written public comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean.
Great, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution of intention to reduce the monthly wastewater service line replacement loan program charge and to eliminate the monthly water and wastewater service line program charges on June 30th, 2030, to amend resolution number 20488 and to set a public hearing for January 11th, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Holliday. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't think, thank you. Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion. The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Consider a sidewalk variance for five one three South Riley. Director Lila? You're on mute.
Sorry about that, thank you, Mayor Commission, I will share my screen roughly, or real quick so you can see where I'm talking. We're talking up off of Second Street, it's close to the Beatty Street Trailhead. And on Raleigh Street, there is an old house that was torn down and the owners are going to construct a, a new residence there. And they are requesting a variance for installing sidewalk along Raleigh Street. There is no adjacent properties that have sidewalk at this time, the closest is down here on Second Street. And Raleigh Street is a gravel road at this time and it is two roughly twenty feet wide. It is not really been constructed to any standard, it's just been sort of put in there over the years. And we have the two adjacent houses that were built in, as best we can get our records to be is nineteen twelve and nineteen thirteen. That is when, um, that is the best records we can get for the two adjacent houses. And we've gone through a lot of sidewalk variances, there are no adjacent sidewalks. The property owners are asking for it because it does not connect to anything. And there's some significant grade and the street is not built to any grade or any standard. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director Lila, comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, for Mr. Leland, um, so, Mr. Leland is, is Raleigh platted to go all the way down to Rhode Island there or even further?
Mayor, Commissioner, yes, it's, it's platted all the way through and has not been vacated. So it goes all the way to Iowa Street before it has been changed in the plats.
Do we have any information on any of those lots? Permits, I know there was a, there was markings up there, another sort of boundaries being set out in that where it says like eight thirty and then just adjacent to the west. Sort of where it says seven oh nine and then south of that, there's kind of another larger rectangular parcel. Are those slated for development, do we have any information on those?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I know eight thirty is privately owned, a lot of these other lots are owned by the city and there is no development plans that, that I'm aware of for any of the other lots except for eight thirty at this time.
So is eight thirty the house we're talking about or is eight thirty a different lot that's, we think is gonna be developed?
It's a different lot.
Mayor Commissioner, it's a different lot, this lot here in the, it'll be, I believe it'll be five nineteen or something along those lines as far as an address.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? What hardship does that pose? I'm sorry.
All right, no, go ahead, Mayor.
I was just gonna ask you, what hardship does it pose to the owners if we decline to pass the variance?
Their justification they provided, Mayor, for the, for not installing it and the hardship is that there really isn't a street constructed on Raleigh Street and it is gonna go nowhere. So it would be basically a waste of time, effort and money to install a sidewalk that will in a sense never be used, so that is their justification, paraphrasing of course. But that is basically what the, what it comes up for is a hardship, is that there's just nothing to connect to. The street goes nowhere, it's not really constructed to any standards, so.
Thank you, Director Lila, Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so if, uh, for Mr. Leland, when that eight, lot eight thirty gets developed, Raleigh will, I mean, that road will get punched through all the way, correct?
Mayor Commissioner, they have access off of Rhode Island Street, it is a flag lot. So that is why that, how they constructed the lot, so they are not planning to have access off of Raleigh Street or the alley, it's, I believe it's actually First Street, uh, going through there, but that does not mean that the plans can't change. They still can access off of First Street or have Raleigh Street go through. But at this time, uh, the way the subdivision was done is to have the lot access off of Rhode Island Street.
Okay, um, one thing I just make a comment on, Mr. Mayor, is that I had emailed staff, the city manager today, and she was able to get some answers back about when the neighboring houses were built. And I thought it was, you know, pretty interesting that it was, you know, I think it was nineteen twelve and
Nineteen thirteen.
Nineteen thirteen, um, and one thing I've, I'm, I'm, I've been thinking about is that it would be shame to go another hundred years and not have sidewalks. Um, and I just think it kind of exemplifies the, the situation that we continue to see around town with connectivity issues. In terms of, you know, some sidewalks having, or some neighborhoods having sidewalks and others not. And, you know, since there is a lot next door that's likely to be developed, that is one thing I'm thinking about.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Did a site visit here recently and, and, you know, the comments that Mr. Leland paraphrased. I mean, as you, as you look at the lay of the land, you look at the, a lot. I, I think it would be a sidewalk to nowhere and, and, um, you know, I would be comfortable granting this variance.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other comments from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands, no written public comment either.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. The mayor? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Just really quickly, I was, I was wondering, um, would it be possible to, I know we've done this before, but to condition a variance on the development of, um, the, the next door property? Or, or sidewalks on the other side where they are developed? The houses, that is.
Mayor Commissioner, that has been done in the past. We can condition it to Raleigh Street being constructed to city standards. If there are adjacent property or adjacent connecting sidewalks, and you can put that as a, as a requirement, but I'd just like to add too, is that the commission can order in sidewalks at any time. So if there is a plan or you would like to have sidewalks connect down to Second Street, you can order in the sidewalks and the adjacent property owner would have to pay them, so. We don't have to condition them, we can condition them, but you can come in at a, at a future date or now and just order sidewalks in.
Director Lila, do you know if we have the, um, the owners on?
I am not, I had not seen them on, Mayor.
Do we have any other questions or comments before we move forward? Okay, Commissioner Logan?
Mr. Mayor, I would, um, make a motion to approve the variance request for the deferral of sidewalks at five thirteen South Raleigh Street.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, this might be a question for, uh, City Attorney Joden. Would this be an appropriate time to maybe amend the motion and condition it upon the development of sidewalks and neighboring properties?
But, uh, Collins, Commissioner Dean, I, you might consider it a, asking or requesting of Commissioner Logan if he uh, consider a friendly amendment, otherwise it doesn't sound like this particular motion present may not have a second. We would, commission would need a, another motion on this action.
But listening to Director Lila, he said we could put sidewalks in anytime, so, um, that shouldn't be a problem then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the only reason I say that is just so it, you know, it would automatically trigger that as soon as other, other sidewalks started going in, similar to what we did on, um, the university very, well, wasn't, uh, university and Mr. Leland will probably remember.
Yeah, up in that area, I remember us discussing that. So would you entertain a friendly amendment, uh, Commissioner Logan?
Certainly.
What's that?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Dean?
I, I will be happy to second.
Second what now?
Uh, second, um, following the friendly, uh, amendment.
Okay, Madam Clerk? It's been moved and seconded, uh.
Are we ready for a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye. You are breaking of, uh, Madam Clerk?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries three to one.
Thank you. Consider an enlargement of the wastewater service area for lot one A in block two of the amended plat of Joseph Cox addition located at Spartan Street, Director Lila?
Mayor Commission, um, this is one of the first enlarging areas that I think a lot of the commission has looked at. In the city of Helena, just to give a little bit of a background, when we are becoming state capital is that there had to be enough lots platted to be able to be a state capital, so a lot of the plat, lots were platted back in Philadelphia, regardless of topography and/or if we could actually serve them with water or any of our services. So in conjunction with that, the city of Helena adopted a wa, uh, water and wastewater service area. It was basically to allow the city to put in conditions. And Thomas, you can correct me if I'm paraphrasing too much, but basically putting conditions for the water and service, water and wastewater areas, uh, to be able to serve the lots or not be able to serve them at all. There's certain areas that we have that are platted lots that we do not have a water pressure to be able to serve and would require tanks or significant infrastructure improvements to be able to serve them. Unfortunately, this lot is not one of those, or fortunately it is. If you serve this lot, there's already water that goes across the frontage of the property in Sparta Street, but there is not wastewater adjacent to their property, so they'd have to extend wastewater. There's significant topography issues. Sparta Street down to Rodney Street is a very, very steep grade and it is going to be, um, interesting to see if they will actually access this lot off of Sparta or off of Rodney Street. So we are giving them options to be able to extend the wastewater main from Rodney Street up this platted alley. It is undeveloped, but it is platted, so they have an opportunity to extend the main up there or to extend the main on Sparta Street, which has some rock issues, but they'd have to install a grinder pump, which is not uncommon within the city of Helena, but those would be the two choices, either one up the platted alley or along Sparta Street. So the recommendation by staff would be to approve the enlargement of the water and wastewater area and then either extend a water main up to the property off of Rodney Street or across the frontage of the property on Sparta Street. If you have any, have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments at this time? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no raised hands and no written public comment.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to conditionally approve the enlargement of the wastewater service area for lot one A in block two of the amended plat of the Joseph Cox addition located on Sparta Street with the condition of extending the sewer main across the frontage of the property on Sparta Street or alternatively extending sewer main from Rodney Street up to the property through the undeveloped alley.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Apologies, Mr. Mayor, I was having some mute issues, Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
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 Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, consider a resolution extending the time period to identify or create an advisory board related to the civic center by January twenty twenty first and establishing a steering committee by amending resolution number two zero five eight five. Director Pinoza?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is a resolution, um, that the commission directed us to bring back. The Civic Center Steering Committee, for some background, was established in early twenty twenty to operate for one year with the express task of assisting the city with the request for proposals process and to help the city identify a new advisory board for the Civic Center. Because of COVID nineteen, the Civic Center Steering Committee has not been able to make as much progress on these tasks as they would have been able to. So the Civic Center Steering Committee recommended, um, to extend their time periods no longer than completion of their work with the RFP process and the assistance in identification of an advisory board. This does require amended, amending that twenty nineteen resolution to extend the twenty twenty one deadline. Additionally, at the November eighteenth commission meeting, the commission gave consensus instruction to the city manager to draft a resolution to extend that work and to complete identification of the advisory board and the RFP process. That RFP process specifically focusing on exploring partnerships. The commission also gave direction for the Civic Center Steering Committee to define that, what success looks like for the Civic Center and give an update commission in early twenty twenty one. The advantage of this would be for the steering committee to be able to complete their work and offer recommendations to the commission. It also provides some clarity and direction for future operation and programming at the Civic Center. The resolution is attached to the agenda and I am available for any questions.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
Perhaps for Director Pinoza. I, I, I've gotten a sense that the Steering Committee is somewhat struggling a little bit with, um, direction from the commission or lack of it. I, I'm, my understanding is you've been a part of each of these, um, steering committee meetings, do you get a sense that this resolution would help that process or help give them a little more direction or better direction?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, yes, I do get that sense that this, this will provide some structure and specific tasks. I think the identification of, uh, sort of identifying what success looks like for the Civic Center will be very helpful as we move forward, particularly with future operations and what the, what the RFP for partnerships looks like.
Mr. Mayor, um, one comment or concern and, and, um, I, I guess I just have, have to say it, but the language of the resolution at the end says, "Composition of the Steering Committee is as currently comprised, except that the mayor may designate a commissioner to chair the meetings in place of the mayor" and, and, uh, I think we were all received the email that addressed some of Commissioner Dean's questions and one of those was that, um, you know, there is not another city advisory board that is chaired by a commissioner and I guess um, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, so.
This board, Commissioner Dean, this board is not, this, this, uh, advisory board is not part of what you are comparing it to the others, this is a temporary what is not part of what you are comparing it to the others. This is a temporary until we can get into until we can get to, uh, get a, uh, advisor board into place. The steering committee is only a steering committee and they're working towards an advisory board. So we, we don't have that because we, we don't have any other steering committees on any other, uh, uh, boards.
Mr. Mayor.
Media is doing is just trying to get us to the next step. Go ahead, Commissioner, uh.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, I mean, I wasn't on or helping out with the Civic Center Advisory Committee when they created the structure if, but I was, my understanding was just like any other board, the Civic Center Board shows its leadership based on whoever was available. My understanding was that you, probably against your will, were nominated to be the chairperson of that board, um, at that first meeting and so when I've been chairing it sort of on your behalf over the past year, much to my chagrin, I've had to chair the meetings and I'd be perfectly thrilled to have someone else chair them um, filling in your spot. So I, I don't, you know, I don't share the concerns as articulated. Um, frankly, any of our city boards could have the commissioner attendee on that board be the chair. I've always told them it's best not to pick a commissioner because when the commissioner terms out or their tenure on that board ends, if it doesn't sync up with the chairmanship, it just makes for more problems. Um, so even if we strike that language, there's nothing that stops that body from renominating um, you or whomever you appoint against their will anyway, which is what happened last time. So leave it in, take it out. It, it doesn't matter, um. So, you know, but whatever it is, the, you can still be the chair whether you want to be or not.
So, does that bring some clarity, Commissioner Logan?
No, I guess, I guess I would be. Let me, let me take a look at the resolution language for just a moment. You know, it, it essentially looks like it binds the steering committee to have a commissioner as the chair. Is that accurate?
And there's nothing wrong with that, Commissioner. I think that according to that, yes.
I, I guess, you know, the steering committee, Mr. Mayor, if they have had this much experience, you know, they've got any number of meetings and time under their belts if they wanted to select whomever as their chair, I guess I would be more comfortable with that.
May I ask why?
For their own autonomy?
The steer committee is only there to create an advisory board. So what makes them not a, a autonomous? Because, uh, a commissioner or the mayor is part of the committee?
Let me think about that a minute.
Mi- Mr. Mayor, I'll offer this up. I, I mean, I think the entire objection here is the fact that I've served in, as your designated and been chairing it. I mean, I'll just, I'll just say that flat out in this discussion, so we don't have to sort of, you know, pussyfoot around it. Um, but honestly, I think the committee should have the option to pick whomever they want. Last time they picked the mayor or commissioner designee, um, you know, leave it, leave it blank. We, we do that the same with the others. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see what the problem is. It seems to be a massive sticking point and um, I say why not let them pick? They picked you last time. If they want to go a different direction, that's, that's their prerogative. Um, the chair does minimal amounts of work other than being stuck chairing the meeting and calling on people raising their hands. Um, the agenda is set by Ms. Pinozo and led by staff and it's largely a cumulative consensus discussion, so um, I think rather than, than this mountain, mountain out of a molehill, um, you know, unless you object vociferously, Mr. Mayor, I think we just let the com- the committee choose who they want.
No, but I don't, I'm, I'm still waiting to see where, where the problem lies. I don't see the problem, so that's, that's that's what confusing to me because if that was a problem, I'll be up in arms wanting to solve that problem, but I don't see a steering committee that is has been given the authority to get an advisory board together. I don't see where the problem lies.
Well. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I guess part of it is it's not just the identification or the creation of the the next advisory board. It also deals with an RFP, which is a, you know, a pretty significant move on the part of this steering committee, so I guess I just would rather see them choose their own, choose their own leadership, make their own decisions and, and, uh, I think Commissioner Halliday put it well. You know, if they choose a different leader, so be it. They've got that opportunity for that and, and if we leave the language in as is, then they must select a commissioner.
And I don't have a problem with that. So. Has there been friction? Commissioner, uh, 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 Halliday? No, I'll prefer, I will ask, uh, Director Pinoza, Director Pinoza, uh, have you attended some of the meetings?
Yes, Mayor, I have.
And were there frictions?
Mayor, no, not with the chair, I, I don't believe.
So then where is this coming from? That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, if things have been flowing, where's this chair, commission, mayor, all of that coming from?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to express the concern that I had.
I appreciate your concern.
In the ability for the steering committee to select its own leadership. Her own chair.
Thank you. I appreciate. Um, Director Pinoza? Have you or Commissioner Halliday, have you all received any communications from any other members of the committee expressing that?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I have not.
Commissioner Halliday?
No, again, I wouldn't mind somebody else chairing the committee, but, um, like, as in, I'd prefer to be a member of the committee, but, uh, rather than the chair, but I don't, I don't care one way or another, Mr. Mayor, like it's this committee spends most of its time having free flowing discussions. The disagreements that have, have all been constructive, the discussions have been constructive. I think we've had more, more friction and discussion about this committee here in the commission um, than the committee itself has actually had in its discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, so I, well, I think I, I started this by sending up my question to, uh, staff, so I I will clarify, when I asked that question, um, I asked that because it, it seemed that it was out of the norm of how other groups within this city are advisory boards in the city function. I do recognize that it is a standing or, excuse me, a, a um, temporary committee, steering committee to help set up a final advisory committee. Yes, I, I absolutely understand that. Um, I do wonder, I think that my question was just because it is out of the norm with how other steering committees work. Um, and from what I can tell from reading the minutes, it does seem that there's more staff involvement in this committee than say other, a, a lot of other committees that normally only have, you know, one staff person there and I know it looked like from the minutes, there's at least normally Ms. Pinozo and, um, and Bridget attending those, um, and so that's, that's where originally the question came from. Um, what I am hearing from this discussion is that there wouldn't necessarily be opposition to, um, replacing that. It's in the last line, just replacing chair to attend, um, to attend the meetings and then allowing the, the board to to decide, um, who the chair is. I, I guess I also was wondering, and maybe Ms. Pinozo can answer this, um, what is the role beyond just part or member of, of, um, Ms. Dupanic, because she's always speaks very clearly and I think does a good job of explaining what the conversation has been, so I'm just curious. You know, what has her role been, um, within leadership on the steering committee?
Uh, Mayor Commissioner Dean, uh, Mrs. Dupanic is the vice chair?
She's the, yeah, she's the vice chair.
Okay. And I think, I mean, I, I do think that it's, um, she does provide really excellent explanations of, of the conversations, um, that have occurred, um, and, and really kind of what the, what the conversation has been, um, and discussions of the board, um. So that's, th- those are just some of my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. So where are we?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I will say this. I, I think there is going to be a sort of, you know, Nikki has done a great job. There are times in no, neither yourself nor myself has been there. She chairs it, right? Somebody else can be chair, somebody else can be vice chair. Um, Nikki recounts exactly what happened the same way I would recount what happened, right, but it's clear from our discussion, I know no one wants to say it, that the recounts of the things that someone else says, irrespective whether they're one hundred percent on point, will be taken by this commission with a greater amount of future acceptance and efficacy. So I think let this commission, let this committee talk, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, so that we don't have to in six months argue about whether or not the commissions fight over a chair position of whether yourself or your designated, um, you know, surreptitiously co-opted the discussion. Um, and let the, 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 the body do its thing. Let them elect who they want to elect and, uh, and go forward because it's clearly a huge deal to some persons. Um, and it, it seems to be one to you, but I will tell you, as somebody who's been on this body, um, when we had the last meeting, the, the individuals who are looking at what, what success is going to be and looking at what, you know, ideas for the future, um, they're not me. I have very limited ideas in this world. Um, they're the individuals who are going to drive the discussion anyway. And so it don't matter if they're the chair or if you're the chair, um, they're the ones who are actually going to make these recommendations. And so since it's so gosh darn important that you not be the chair or your designated not be the chair in order for these recommendations to be ultimately given credence, to me, it's like, step by this one.
Uh, I, I keep hearing this is not the usual process, but we've never had this, I mean, people comparing this to other boards. We don't have, this is not a board. This is a steering committee that is going to advise, uh, going to get a board together. So I, I, I'm still trying to find out the problem here. And nobody seemed to be able to tell me their problem, so, uh, you know, we, we, I believe we'll move on as, as is.
Well, I, I am totally with you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I am just looking to facilitate a, a solution here, but I, I, I don't.
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying and I understand everything, but in order to just say, I don't like this because of this, I mean, I, I, I need reasons, I mean.
Mr. Mayor.
Nothing really.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I do think that, well, and I think this maybe exemplifies, you know, why have, taking the commission out of of the discussion and, and why it went to a steering committee so that it got out of the conversation of, of the commission, which, you know, I mean, I wasn't here last year, but I watched it and, you know, was very it, that was a, a, a rough last meeting, um, when, when that was adopted. So I do, I think that, um, the steering committee was, was put in place from what I understand to you know, find solutions and take it out of, um, this body and then give us a good recommendation of what it looks like. Um, and you know, I have, I, I mean, I, I was, I didn't realize that the, um, the board had elected a chair. Um, it was my understanding that the committee, the, the steering committee. I, 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 it was my understanding that the commission implemented who would be the chair, not, not vice versa, um. And I guess the clarification on that would be good, um, but I'm, you know, I, I would just like to make sure that the conversations aren't necessarily, um, are not infiltrated with the converse, this similar, the tone of the conversation that we clearly have had here tonight.
What was the, what, what's the tone been?
Well, I mean, this has been the most contentious issue with seeing, I mean, I, I I, I asked a question in an email that seemed to prompt, um, a lot of discussion, um, which is great, discussion is good. Um, but I also want to make sure that we give the steering committee the ability to have a a discussion that's focused and really working on solutions about how to make the Civic Center successful. Um, and then coming back to this commission with that, that recommendation.
And that's what they've been doing.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I don't know how difficult or if this is even possible, um. The resolution has the last line that says the composition of the steering committee is as currently comprised, except that the mayor may designate a commissioner to chair the meetings in the place of them, in place of the mayor. Could it be as simple as except that the steering committee may designate its own leadership?
Any reasons why we changing it?
Again, I'm maybe going to go back to the consistency of other boards. I know that this is not an advisory board, but that's.
But then why are we creating, why are we behaving that it is? It's not. And that's the difference. It's not. We can't say it's an advisory board when it's not. It's not advisory board. It's a steering committee that will create an advisory board.
Mr. Mayor, I may.
Go ahead, Madam Manager.
The, uh, steering committee was created by the previous city manager. It was created as a result of uh, interest and the previous city manager did ask the mayor chair it. So it was an informal staff-created committee to inform an RFP that the city staff would later put out. That, uh, I just wanted to make sure to clarify that point and you know, is, um, move to the vote if you're most interested. Thank you.
That's what we do. We'll move to a vote. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I will move, um, to approve the resolution with the amendment that the steering committee be given the opportunity to elect its leadership.
I would second that.
That, it's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday? Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
No.
The motion carries three to one.
Thank you. Consider the approval of the Helena Open Lands Major Park Recreation Project for twenty twenty one, Director Pinoza?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, we brought this before you at the last administrative meeting. Um, and this is our twenty twenty one major projects for Helena Open Lands Recreation Projects Specific. Um, this comes out of our newly adopted Helen Open Lands Recreation Chapter Seven and the public input process that is an appendix to that chapter. Um, we went through a lengthy, um, and robust public, uh, process over this, over the last four months. Um, where we had, uh, multiple, uh, open meetings, public meetings, um, to identify potential projects, major projects, recreation projects on Helena Open Lands. Um, we started out the process, uh, identifying as a department for projects and we received sixteen proposals from the public, uh, four of which we are bringing forward, um, and three of our department projects we're bringing forward um, for final adoption or final approval from the commission. We are also proposing because we were. We are also proposing, because we received several project proposals on the DeFord Trail and Davis Gulch, forming a a working group to work on those projects. The proposals are for a ADA specific reconfiguration of the trail, some work reconstruction to the bike courses along the Davis Trail and reconfiguration of some of the parking along Davis. We're we're proposing that the working group be composed of the three project proposals represented from Helena Hikes, Helena Trails Alliance and the Montana Bicycle Guild, a member of HOMAC, a city staff member from Community Development. And we will facilitate this working group with three meetings over the next three months in January, February and March. We'll have a final recommendation from the group that will come to the Parks Department. The proposal will undergo project analysis as all of our other projects have and ultimately be brought before the commission for final approval. Approving this major projects list will allow the Parks Department to move forward on important projects for open land access, sustainability, safety and recreation opportunity for the community. I do have staff member, Open Lands manager Brad Langseter on the call if you have any specific questions about any of the projects. Otherwise, we are both here for questions.
Thank you, Director Pinozo. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mister Mayor, I have one comment and a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. From Ms. Pinozo, first, the the format that you all used, I know you've used it before, but just the extensiveness of the the comments and responses, I really appreciate that. It was very clear that you all spent a significant amount of time responding and really engaging with the community and that all the people providing comment clearly felt like they were being heard. And so I I do greatly appreciate that and really looking forward to how this process works in future years too, because first year in, I think that you've got, you guys have done a really great job handling that. My only question is, I know that, you know, I asked the question last week how this will fall into kind of the strategic planning and I'm just wondering if when you kind of move into some of these future discussions and we start figuring out, you know, budgeting and the rest and how it aligns with this strategic plan, if you envision that, you know, there might be a priority list or or some sort of further discussion about, you know, what projects are most immediate versus not depending on on budget or any other constraints. Thank you.
Thank you, the Commissioner. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, just for Ms. Pinozo. You know, when you joined the city, you inherited sort of the problems of lack of participation of the past. What got us here to where we are today is 80th Street and the directional trail discussions based on the way we used to do open lands projects. And I know it was probably not your dream to step into the city of Helena and inherit the redo of the recreational portion of the open lands plan, but there's a reason that Wednesday's meeting included only positive comments and a limited number of comments. And it's because, you know, we moved away from what was a opaque system two years ago into what we have today. And so, you know, kudos to you on sort of, you're never going to make everyone happy, but the the process worked this time and there will be times when it doesn't work. But but ultimately, you guys did a great job. So thank you for sort of moving us past where we were. And again, not a not a creation of yours, but you you took a problem that you encountered and you've executed on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
I I was just, I was just wondering if Ms. Pinozo might be able to answer my question regarding the priority list.
Director Pinozo.
Yes, Mayor Commissioner Dean. Yes, that that is something that I think we should consider. You know, one thing that we found through this this first time doing this public process is we had a lot of proposals. We really had to narrow those down and even with the amount of projects that we have, we won't be able to complete all of them in 2021. We will have to complete some of them in 2022, which I think I mentioned last week. So yes, we would very much be looking for some overarching direction through strategic planning to sort of help us with that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mister Mayor, Ms. Pinozo, on that front, do you have any rough estimates on any of them? And I I don't want you to give them to us if you do tonight, but understanding those for the purposes of strategic planning and moving into the budget would be helpful, right? Because maybe the number one project costs $1 billion and everything else costs $100,000. And so maybe you do everything but the number one project or maybe you can do five projects. But if you really want to do this other one, you can only do three. So that that kind of, even if they're very rough estimates, would be helpful. Also, so we would know going into the budget, given that I'm guessing most of these will be funded primarily by the open lands assessment. If we saw, for example, that there was a project we could knock out in 2021 or in fiscal '22, merely by tweaking that rate just slightly or or thinking about how we use that money strategically, all of that's incredibly helpful. Because if we can, if we can check off a good project today rather than punting it till tomorrow, I think that's something we'll want to think about. So any specificity you have going into that would be wonderful.
Yes, Mayor Commissioner Halliday, we do have costs associated with all those projects. Many of them are being accomplished through with open lines assessment funds, but some of them we're looking to grants and outside project funding. But yes, we will associate costs. And it's something to think about as we look at our future major projects and what those might look like. You know, we kind of aren't looking at projects that we can't fund, but we probably should look at that a little bit differently and instead look at what really needs to be done and then how we how we get that funding.
Thank you, Director Pinozo. Any other comments? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor Commissioners, I've received no written public comment and no hands are raised.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I'd move approval of the Helen Open Lands Major Recreation Projects for 2021.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Hi.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Public, public hearings. Consider final passage of ordinance number 3286, amending chapter one of Title V of the Helena City Code by repealing part three. Possession of firearms prohibited. Exception in its entirety and adopting five dash one dash three firearms and other weapons discharged in its place. Attorney Jordan.
Now, Mister Mayor, I think we skipped over the Gulf B Resolution of Intention, item nine F.
Nine F. Oh, yes, we did. I apologize, Director Pinozo. You're on mute.
Sorry. Yes, thank you. I will make this brief.
You didn't see that.
We every year, we adopt our fees for the golf course and these are the fees for the 2021 season. You guys received a preview of this on the, in the draft book of fees. But as directed and consistent with the resident discount fees adopted broadly for all parks and recreation programs last year, these new golf fees do include the Tower Club Resident Discount Program and two other resident discount programs, a family pass that the pool is included and a half season pass for with that has residential discounts. There, all of the rates across the board are not in, are in a position to remain constant for '21, except for some slight increases. We do have minimal increases proposed to season passes. Pass holders continue to be the largest users of the facility. And this yearly in the future, our yearly increases will be much more on a on a regular increased basis where we will increase our fees a certain percentage every year. But these are the fees and they are included in the packet and I am here as well as our head golf pro Conlon Burke, if you have any specific questions.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mister Mayor, I have one question and a comment. My first, my comment is, I have I have seen, I know that my demographic is the one that the the golf course would is consistently wanting to be targeted, getting a younger people involved. And I'm seeing ads all over my Facebook or in my, excuse me, my Instagram for the golf course. So your targeting is working and it looks really great. I don't know who did the video, but it it was a, it was a really good piece. My question was, and I I know that we talked about this before, but it is my understanding that the golf advisory board has been supportive of all of of all of this and and helpful throughout the process. Is that correct?
Mayor Commissioner Dean, yes, the golf advisory board, we do run all our fees by them and they are involved.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk, any raised hands?
Mister Mayor Commissioners, there are no raised hands, no written public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution of intention to establish fees to be charged for the Bill Roberts Municipal Golf Course 2021 season.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor, just one comment before we vote on it. I just want to say, you know, I am glad to see for the first time a breakout of residential versus resident city Helena resident fees versus non-resident fees. I know we've applied it as a discount, but it's something that we had talked about, I want to say a year ago, it came up with this question of whether or not the general fund was going to be forced to subsidize the golf course, right? And I think even you acknowledged, if I remember right, back then, that yes, there's a problem if right, if this enterprise fund is asking for money, but we're saying anyone can come in and use it, even if they're not paying general fund taxes and you know, this this last year's budget sessions underscored just how dire that is. So I'm I'm glad to see us do this. I hope we don't move away from it. I think it's an important differential to make in how this golf course operates, especially so long as we have the need to potentially go to the general fund for assistance in the future.
You bet. Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday. Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Public hearings. Consider final passage of the ordinance number 3286, amending chapter one of Title V of the Helena City Code by repealing part three. Possessions of firearms prohibited. Exception in its entirety and adopting five dash one dash three firearms and other weapons discharged in its place. Attorney Jordan.
Thanks, Mayor. Commissioners, this is the final passage of an ordinance bringing the, basically bringing Helena City Code Regulation of Firearms into compliance with the impending effective date of Legislative Referendum 130, LR 130, which passed in November 2020. The the main component of that legislative referendum that affects the city of Helena and its regulations of firearms deals with the the current and present regulation of open carry of firearms in or with respect to public assemblies, city of Helena Parks, schools. LR 130 specifically limits local government's authority to regulate firearms only in publicly owned and occupied buildings within its jurisdiction. So the the draft ordinance does mirror that, captures that language from LR 130. I would also remind the commission and the public that state law 45-8-328, Montana Code annotated, does prohibit the carrying of concealed weapons in portions of buildings used by local government offices that have been restricted. So between that statute and the new city code, which will be effective 30 days from tonight, if passed, is that you can't can carry an unconcealed firearm, meaning an open carry in a publicly owned and occupied building, nor can you carry a concealed weapon in places where there are offices that are restricted. So it theoretically should not be much of a change from where we currently stand with respect to publicly owned buildings. However, it is as a loss of regulation of firearms in public assemblies in city of Helena Parks and other open spaces. With that, I will answer any questions that the commission has. I do recommend a motion to approve final passage of this ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Attorney. Much appreciated. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I just a comment, and I just wanted to reiterate my my thoughts from that I mentioned at the last meeting that I just believe that it's unfortunate that LR 130 passed. It's confusing. It's poorly written and I believe it's antithetical to long-held Montana value of making local community decisions at that level. And it's, you know, unfortunate that we have to take this motion tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, for the city attorney, so following up on Commissioner Dean's comments that we have to take this action tonight. I think last time we spoke, you indicated that city of Great Falls was at least based on their representations of their city attorney waiting till potentially the end of this session to find out if any tweaks or changes were made. It was my understanding that the cities of Bozeman and Missoula may be doing the same. Do you have any information on what those jurisdictions are doing with regard to any understanding that their respective ordinances are different? But what are they doing right now and do we know if others are just waiting?
Yeah, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, that's correct. The Great Falls City Attorney has recommended to their commission. And I don't know what the ultimate direction was, but to hold off on changing their ordinance, Great Falls' ordinance, which is similar to Helena's in in the aspect of regulating public assembly, carrying of firearms on public assemblies in public parks, I think on sidewalks and streets, you know. Mind you, that's the the open carry. If you have a concealed weapons permit, you're exempt exempted from that. Bozeman's, I do not know. I wasn't able to get in touch to find that out. In terms of Missoula, their city attorney's office had drafted changes and at last I heard it was still in a council committee taking that up for debate. I don't know what the status of that is. In terms of comparison to ours, they're all pretty similar. I think the main reason, you know, not that we want to see this ordinance go forward, but the main thing is, is our current ordinance does exempt those who have concealed weapons permit from from any of our regulations. And if we were to keep that regulation and the effective date of or the effective date of LR 130, we could potentially be in a situation where we don't have any regulation of carrying into publicly publicly owned and occupied buildings. Because all that's left is open carry and because our concealed weapons permit exception allows you to basically do whatever you want, they would be able to open carry, which is the only thing we're allowed to regulate under LR 130. If if that makes sense. In other words, if they have a concealed weapons permit, they don't have to carry it concealed.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mister Mayor and Commissioners, I've seen no raised hands and I've received no written comment this evening.
Okay.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, just quickly. So if there are changes during this session, I'm sorry, just quickly. So if there are changes during this session, I guess I would ask that, you know, this comes back, that city attorney Joden maybe comes back to us with, with the new recommendation, you know, based on any of those changes and, um, and keeps us surprised of, of, you know, what might be coming down.
Definitely, I'm sure he would.
Absolutely, Mayor Collins. Yeah, we're working closely, uh, both myself and manager Harlow Schalk. We're working closely with the, with the league in Kelly and Tim, that's to keep track of, of what's going on, especially with regard to not only firearms, but local authority.
And Mister Mayor, I'll just say, you know, I, I voted to move this forward last time. There were only three of us here. Um, I thought we'd get a full commission on it. You know, I'm not going to support this motion tonight if we have a motion to repeal and put a new ordinance in place. My preference would be that we table this. Essentially to the call of the city manager or the close of the session when we know something specific with regard to what's going to happen with these laws, because if there is additional tweaks, we're going to have to reopen it anyway. I wouldn't be surprised if this is a subject of litigation, at which point we'll have abandoned our old policy and have a new one in place that will then have to go through the same rigmarole to reenact what, what we had. So my, my, my position would be I'd prefer to table this, um, and I'll be a note if we're going to move to repeal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission?
Mister Mayor, I, I'm just wondering if, um, Ms. Harlow Schalk has any thoughts on, on that potential recommendation of, of tabling, you know, pending a, a recommendation from her based on current events?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Dean, they, advice we've just received from Thomas was that we could be in effect setting ourselves up for no ordinance at all. So, um, I think either way, we could have litigation, I suppose. Um, so it really is up to you all to decide what you choose to on the path and we will as staff implement.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Question perhaps for Mister Joden if we do, let's say we table it. What kind of position does that put our law enforcement officers in?
Uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Logan, I, I would mostly defer to Chief Hagan. I know for my perspective, we would definitely want to, uh, make sure the officers are aware that effective January one, twenty twenty-one, uh, our ordinance, especially with respect to public assemblies and, uh, parks and the carrying, open carrying of firearms can no longer be enforced and that they understand that if the situation were to arise. And that they understand that the, the regulation on publicly owned buildings or publicly owned and occupied buildings is absolutely clear, although, uh, I think has been hinted at, that phrase is undefined. And I think we will probably see either legislation clarifying that or litigation about what that means.
Chief Hagan, you got any comments?
Mister Mayor.
I, uh, we're waiting for Chief Hagan.
Mayor and Commissioner, good evening. Um, I would echo with, with what Thomas said, that we would basically, um, ensure that our officers were aware we would no longer be enforcing the city, um, open and carry, uh, open and carry ordinance. I think we, we, we are okay with, um, officers, basically training the officers that, that, that ordinance is no longer in effect.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Dean?
I'm sorry, sorry for interrupting. Um, I, so I just want to be clear. If, if we table this tonight, we would be in a position where there would be no regulation in our, in our public buildings. Is, would, is that correct, Mister Joden?
I think, uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, I think with respect to those individuals that have concealed weapon, uh, weapons permit, they would be able under LR, between the conjunction of LR one thirty and our current city code, current city code allows concealed weapons permit holders, uh, not subject, uh, to our city code, but because LR one thirty, um, permits local government to regulate in those publicly owned and occupied buildings, we've exempted them completely. So they could open carry or concealed carry. Um, I think it would be an awkward situation to tell them, um, please conceal your weapon.
Okay, um, okay. So I, I guess I don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we are where our public buildings are, you know, potentially put in jeopardy because of a, a gap. But I would like to, um, you know, move as quickly as possible if there is a, a change in, you know, during the session or, or an outcome of, um, some sort of litigation, um, you know, to, to find a place where we can, i- if there's litigation that, that I guess removes the ability of LR one thirty to do what it's trying to do, then I, I would like to, and I don't know if Mister Joden has a recommendation if we need to change the motion at all, but that we, um, we, we give ourselves the opportunity to, um, come back to what we have now if LR one thirty is invalidated or, or something else comes from, from a, a judgment.
I mean, Commissioner, that'll just be for us. Once we repeal and dump this, we would have to just tell the city attorney to draft a new one, repeal that one and put a new one into place. So, I mean, the last thing you want to do is make a motion to reenact a prior ordinance that may ultimately be tweaked or changed or subject to a court opinion that also might not be, um, kosher anymore in six months. So if, if we repealed this tonight, we'll just have to recircle in six months and decide if there's anything left. We could say our whole ordinance goes back into place, um, and go through that sort of arduous process, or we might find out that we can regulate a slight bit more or no more, or it could get worse. But I, I certainly wouldn't support any kind of idea of a automatic re revival of something that might not be legal at that time either.
Mister Mayor, I wonder if I could just ask Commissioner Halliday if he has thoughts about, um, this idea that we're going, if we would, if we did, if we tabled this tonight, that we would not have anything in place. In terms of, you know, regulations in city buildings.
Yeah, I, I haven't had the chance to talk with the city attorney about that. I mean, I've read through it. I guess I don't fully see that, but I will say that now that that opinion is on the record, um, it'll get very difficult for us to backtrack from it. So it, I, I recognize that it puts us in a, in a near impossible place where we're now gonna, you know, potentially have to, have to retract this thing. Um, but I'm, I'm certainly still in favor of tabling it. I, I just don't see why we have to take action right now. I think we should still be able to prevent, prevent that in city buildings. And if that's all we need, then we tweak that language because LR one thirty still lets us do that. And so if there's something we needed to do to actually block that, fine, but I, I just don't like the idea of repealing this today. And I think there's going to be, I mean, my understanding is Missoula is going to enforce theirs. Um, and they're going to provoke a legal challenge to it and we're going to see what comes of it in the near future.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm wondering, um, Mister Harlow Schalk or, or, um, city attorney Joden, do you have any thoughts if we move this to an early January, um, meeting, you know, for an opportunity to, you know, fully understand what, what the option is or if, or if it would remain the same?
Attorney Jordan?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, I don't have an issue with that. I think the, we may be running short on time to draft an ordinance to get on to the agenda uh, for January eleventh without having some of that, uh, I guess, direction from the commission and maybe perhaps a more limited, uh, amendment as to the, uh, concealed weapon exception, these would be the open carry, uh, LR one thirty permission. But the short answer is yes, we can get it back to the commission.
Anyone, Ms. Harlow Schalk, or you're in agreement?
Yes, uh, Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Dean, yes. I am in agreement. We can put it on that next agenda.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion or an amended motion for whichever.
Um, so Mister Mayor, I guess I would, it's January eleventh, is that correct, Ms. Harlow Schalk? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Mayor, if I may, the next meeting of the commission is, yes, January eleventh.
Okay, and Mister Joden, that would, that's, that would work for you?
Cutting it close.
I guess, Mayor Commissioners, I'm, I'm not quite sure what is, am I just bringing this particular item back as is? Or is there?
I, I guess I would like to see having some time to, to fully understand what, um, how other communities are going to, might respond between now and then, um, to make sure that we, you know, avail ourselves of every opportunity.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, I think it's safe to say Helena right now is the only one moving forward aggressively as, as I have proposed.
So I guess Mister Mayor, I, I, um, would move to table until the January eleventh, city commission meeting.
Mayor, I, I apologize. Before we take a motion, since this is a public hearing, maybe take a public hearing before, uh, deciding on what a motion might be. I apologize, Commissioner Dean.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Jordan. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands or questions in the box?
Mister Mayor Commissioners, I've received no written public comment at this time and I have no raised hands.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I'll move to table until the January eleventh commission meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
Motion carries two to one.
Thank you. Okay, uh, consider a resolution establishing fees to be charged for services and programs of the city of Helena and use of city facilities to be known as the book of fees and charges and charges and repeat all previous resolution adopted on establishing fees. Director Danielson?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Evening.
This is the, uh, resolution that was brought forward as, um, the, the book of fees. This was a, uh, the, the city of Helena, uh, staff had been working on amending ordinances to remove the fee amounts to consolidate into a one place for ease of access for city employees and the public. Ordinance number three, one, seven, seven, fee establishment procedures of resolution twenty thousand, zero, zero, three. The process of updating new and increasing fees currently happens many times throughout the year and many, many different resolutions and ordinances. The city commission approved a resolution of intention to establish the book of fees and charges on November twenty-third instead of public key hearing for today, December twenty-first. The objective was to consolidate all fees into a book of fees and have passage once per year. We discussed, uh, we discussed this at the administrative, uh, meeting earlier this month and, um, staff at this time, um, believes that moving forward with the establishment of a, a book of fees to consolidate all fees and be passed at one time, um, would be dis- disadvantageous and that, um, it would present the opportunity for errors and also present the opportunity for people to not, the public to not really understand, um, the full, uh, concept of all of the fees that are being discussed and passed. And so staff recommends introducing a motion that tables the book of fees at this time.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mister Mayor, there are no raised hands, no written public comment.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I will move to table the book of fees.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye. Thank you. Consider a resolution amending the revised fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for the city of Helena, Montana by amended resolution number two, zero, six, zero, nine, and transfer in two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, thirty-eight cents as of eleven, ten, twenty twenty for the community renewal fund to affordable housing trust fund. Budget analyst, Kui.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Now, tonight we have for your consideration a resolution, uh, amending the revised fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for the city of Helena by amending resolution number two, zero, six, zero, nine and transferring, uh, in full. But as of November tenth, twenty twenty, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents from the community renewal fund to the affordable housing trust fund. Um, on November ninth, the commission approved the creation of an affordable housing trust fund. The commission has expressed an interest in transferring the proceeds from the sale of the property commonly referred to as the old bus depot, uh, and KCAP park from the community renewal fund to the affordable housing trust fund. So those proceeds were received by the city in fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, and so they are currently in the funds reserve or fund balance. Increasing appropriations from reserves to complete the transfer requires resolution amendment to the fiscal year budget. Uh, as a, a transfer like this is not a designated use of the community renewal fund reserves. On November twenty-third, the city commission approved a resolution of intention to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget by amending resolution number two, zero, six, zero, nine to include these appropriations and set a public hearing date for tonight, December twenty-first. The objective here is to receive both commission and public input and consider the resolution amending the budget to allow for the transfer of these funds from the community renewal fund to the affordable housing trust. Uh, the advantage here is the transfer provides the newly createable, the newly created affordable housing trust fund with initial funding without affecting any other current scheduled purchases or, or projects. The disadvantage to this transaction would be the transferring the funds, uh, in full out of the community renewal fund joined with the language for funding the affordable housing trust fund in the future through the sale of city property, uh, will effectively eliminate the community renewal fund. Currently, that fund receives all or a portion of the sale of city properties that are not of enterprise fund origin uh, or lack of clear lineage of ownership by any department. Those guidelines were set by, uh, city staff and relayed to the commission, but never adopted as any sort of official city policy. Um, without any, uh, sort of official sense to those guidelines, the affordable housing trust fund language would take precedence, uh, and the community renewal fund would receive no further funding. And so staff's recommendation tonight is the approval of a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for the city uh, and allowing for the transfer of these funds. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alice Kui. Questions or comments from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
I have no raised hands, Mister Mayor, and no written public comment.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I'd move to approve a resolution amending the revised fiscal year twenty twenty one budget for the City of Helena, Montana by amending resolution number two zero six oh nine and transferring two hundred and ninety nine thousand six hundred and twenty seven dollars and thirty eight cents as of November ten, twenty twenty, from the Community Renewal Bull, Community Renewal Fund to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Hi.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there any member of the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk?
At this time, I see no raised hands and there's no written commentary that's been added.
Okay, we'll give them another forty five seconds. All right, I want to thank you all for attending our city commission meeting. And at this time, if no further comments or questions, I'll formally adjourn this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.